I will entertain a motion to approve minutes for February 25th and February 25th executive session. Second, motions made in second today, discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. I'll entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant number 20 for $331,221.42. School warrant number 1079 for $240,505.84. General warrant number 1080 for $331,735.67. The wastewater treatment plant upgrade and Fire Highway 1081 for $223,558.90. And general warrant number 1082 for $147.38. I'll second, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have spending requests. First one is from our office, $500 from CM Geeks for upgrading half the town office computers. The other half will be in fiscal year '26 after the first of July. It's for upgrading the hard disk drives to solid state drives to increase computer speed and extend the lifespan of machines, postponing the need to replace all 10 machines in the near future. One new machine will cost more than upgrading all 10. I'll entertain a motion to approve that spending request.
So moved.
I'll second, any discussion?
No, that's great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next one is for $387.90 from the senior center for convertible benches to replace the picnic table. And it's for outdoor seating and the funds to be taken from a state grant. I'll entertain a motion to approve that spending request.
So moved.
I'll second, any discussion?
Do we approve anything that's great funded?
Yes.
Yes?
It's still a spending request, so.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a, we've gotten a comprehensive management plan from Northbrook Field Emergency Management. And we've read it and it is basically a plan set up for in the event of emergencies for all the departments to work together. And it sets orders for who's supposed to be in charge depending on the response. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the comprehensive management plan as written by emergency management.
So moved.
I'll second, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's also a recommendation by emergency agencies throughout the state, so. All right. New business. The ban paperwork, do we need to vote on that?
Yes, we need to vote to sign it.
And let's see, what does ban stand for?
Off the top of my head, I don't know, but it's when we are doing like final borrowing for different projects. This one's for the Fire Highway project.
Hello. Hello. Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve and sign the ban paperwork.
So moved.
I'll second, any discussion?
No.
Alright, and this finalizes some of our borrowing that we have. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sheila Orsi, Downtown Development.
I think I was requested to come down here because there was discussion about a helipad being put on the parking lot area over to the left of the police department.
Okay.
So I just wanted to find out, I guess, what was going on with that? What did you request for what that is?
I don't think we actually requested that you come to that, to the meeting. I don't think. But that is.
Yeah.
It is designated as a landing zone, particularly in winter.
Right.
And it's been discussed briefly with emergency management personnel about making it look a little more professional. But there's never been any formal discussion amongst the board.
Okay.
Or anything like that, so we're not really at that point unless you've got something you want to say about it.
Well, I mean, I'll close stuff up there since I'm on the agenda and we'll just put it on record. So I have some stuff, that way it's there. My understanding that, my understanding back when Joe Holloway had put some information in front of a bunch of people was that they had found a grant and they wanted to put a helipad down. Since then, nothing's really happened with that. And then I've heard the rumor of a helipad come up again, so I guess that's why I'm kind of here. So there being a landing zone there, I don't think that there's any problem with that because a landing zone is a totally different designation than a helipad. A helipad is like a federally aviated, specific place. I did minimal research and just kind of dove into it to see what the difference was between the two. And I think that, I think that would be a poor choice for a downtown area to put a designated helipad area in. With that, we're also having negotiations and speaking with Vibram about the possibility of them adding some parking over back here behind the police station.
Sure.
Which we haven't solidified anything yet, but we're working with them because we're trying to work out the parking. We've talked about this for the front too. So I think if we had put a helipad in that area, it would, would not be a good choice for a downtown area. There's a lot of other options that we have. But I think a landing zone is totally fine.
It's only been brought up in passing, it's not anything that's actually been worked on or discussed.
Awesome. So rumors through the grapevine were that there was a grant that was coming through and we wanted to all put a helipad there.
Have not heard about a grant.
All right, excellent.
I didn't hear a grant either.
So, all right, well, that's what I'm saying. That's why I'm here, just to bring that up. So having a landing zone that's a temporary location that could be designated but then removed and we could do different things with that land is great. But I think that putting an actual helipad down in that spot is a very poor choice for a downtown area.
John?
I was on the board when we designated that as a landing zone. And they had to come out and make sure they had enough area just to land the helicopter.
Yes.
If you put a landing pad there, and they told us that, I know Joey had, we were all involved in that. You don't have the width or the length to put an actual landing pad there. Lights and everything.
Like I said, in passing.
Right, it should be somewhere in the, it's from two, three years ago when we designated it. And it was just as an alternate landing zone, which you can't use the playground or the high school.
And that makes sense, I'm in agreement with that too. That makes total sense and it's just a designation.
Correct.
Right, so that's, I'm fine with that. If it was going to be a helipad, I was like, hmm, hell no.
Yep.
No?
Eric? You made it to time. So we've got a letter here that Eric has drafted, he's our sewer superintendent. Because there are other upgrades that are necessary for the sewer plant and he's trying to get grant money for that. Alright, do you want to explain the upgrades that we need to get the grant money for?
Sure.
And then we'll read the letter and...
Yep, I actually printed out the blueprints that were part of the design for the clarifiers. So basically, there's two.
Are they both the same?
Secondary clarifiers.
Are these both the same?
Yes. They're essentially just two large circular tanks. Anybody that's been down with the feet and may or may not have been understanding these. It's basically just a large tank that allows the velocity of the water to slow down. It allows the solids to settle to the bottom and the clear liquid to go over the top and down to the next process. They were originally supposed to be done in the scope of the work with the upgrade. Unfortunately, they were what we call a bid alternate and we ran out of money, so we were not able to complete these. They're both about 35 years old, they're in pretty rough shape. And one of them actually has a blown oil seal, so it's leaking oil. And they don't have very much life left to them. They're an essential, like I said, an essential part of the piece of the, of the process. Without them, you pretty much don't have treatment. So we're looking to apply for what they call congressionally direct spending, which is basically, it's just federal money. You basically apply through the senator's office. There's an application. You apply, they have a committee that either approves or denies it. So that's basically what I'm here for tonight, is to get the board's approval to move forward with the application. What they call a CDS federal funding. We're looking, I'm working with Kleinfelder on this, the engineering firm. They're the ones, they have all the grant writers and all that happy stuff, so. I believe they're, they're going to apply for anywhere from 1.5 to 2 million. Obviously, we don't know, there's a lot of criteria that they look for, like they want to know what the project cost is. But until it goes out to bid, as you guys know, you expect one thing and it comes back twice as much. So, you know, we're going to, we're going to tell them, we have estimates of 1.7. That's what the contractor that's on site now has estimated. So like I said, we're going to apply for 1.5 or 2. And then we're going to apply for, there's several different grants you can apply for as part of the CDS. And we're looking to apply for what they call Rural Development Community Facilities Grant. They think that would be the best one for us. It's basically any community that falls under low income and less than 5,000 users, which I believe Northbrook Field does fall under both those criteria. So that's basically the gist of it. There is a 25% match if you're approved. And they, they'll actually fund up to 75%. There's no guarantee that you'll get all that. So, you know, that's our plan right now. You guys might be thinking, well, where do we come up with 25%? So let's just assume it was 1.5, right? We'd get, well, let's just, let's assume it was 2 million. We'd probably get 1.5, we have to come up with 500 grand. We would probably have to dig into our retained earnings for that, which we have in there now. But it would certainly deplete every bit of it, which is not ideal. But like I said, the clarifiers are an essential piece. Unfortunately, they should have been done. But, you know, as I told you guys before, that's water under the bridge now. It was a different, my predecessor had a different agenda. Instead, we focused on other areas. And I know his intentions were to go back and spend more money, which it just, clearly that's not going to be an option, so. You know, like I said, I don't want to beat a dead horse, keep telling you guys, but these have to be done one way or another, whether we get the money or we don't. I actually reached out to the manufacturer to see if we could rehab them, maybe like rebuild them. And the parts are obsolete, like I said, they were manufactured 35 years ago. That company's really not even in business anymore, they sold out to another company. So you basically just have to replace the whole mechanism. So if you guys just quickly look at the drawing.
You doing the tanks too, Eric, or just the mechanism?
Nope, the, well, in a perfect world, if we get all the money, what they're going to try to do, concrete rehabilitation too, because there's a lot of what they call aggregate. Jason, you might know what that means, working in the industry. But all the rock, the stone that was in the concrete 35 years ago is showing now.
The smooth surface.
The smooth surface has worn away, so that does need to be rehabilitated, but we can survive without that. What we really need is the moving mechanism that you see in section A here. The gearboxes, the motors, the drives, all those are failing, rusting. And they're pretty much on their last leg. So if we have, if we can just get enough money to replace those, fine. We'll have to live with poor, poor concrete, you know, conditions in there, but that won't affect treatment. Not having this sludge scraper that draws sludge to the middle of the tank and sucks it back to the head of the abrasion reasons. Without that, we're going to be looking at, EPA will be knocking on the door for sure. So anyways, that's why I'm here. I drafted up this letter for you. You don't have to read it if you don't want to, but you're welcome to. Just looking for a few signatures. One stipulation of the, as part of the application is you're supposed to have a letter, two letters of support from the town. We requested that they just allow us to send one. I didn't, I invited my board of sewer commissioners here tonight, on two separate occasions. I did not receive a call or an email back from any of them. So I didn't have much faith that they were going to write a letter for me, unfortunately. So, but they are going to allow us just to send this one.
Okay.
And I did send it to Ashley yesterday. This actually landed on my desk last week. We were under the impression that this was going to open up in spring. When Kleinfelder reached out back on Monday, they said, oh no, the deadline's the 31st. So we're kind of in a scramble now to get it in, yeah.
So the letter goes first, they approve and then you can send the application, is that how they?
No, so the letter is part of the application. There's a few, yeah, there's a few other things. Actually, there's a question that I need to have answered by you guys. And that is, does the requesting entity retain federally registered lobbying representation? I think that basically means, do we have an attorney, a federal attorney that you got, that we use? Or is it just like a private, local?
Well, we have town council, so we have a law firm we deal with, so.
I didn't think we'd fall into that, but it is something that Kleinfelder asked me to ask you guys. So I think the answer to that is no.
Did you read the letter?
I did, yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to approve and sign the letter of support for the Sewer Department to Elizabeth Lawrence's office.
So moved.
I'll second, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
I hope it works.
Yeah, me too.
You're better, right?
Right, I know.
I should probably note too, if this, if this is denied, there's also another option for funding through what they call the House. I'm not overly politically, I don't have much political background, I'm not sure if that's something to do with the state, but there is another round of funding we can apply for.
Okay.
Okay, excellent.
Eric, do you have somebody that you talked to about the grant to help you work through the grant? Usually it's just say to help you work through it.
Yeah, the engineer, Kleinfelder, the town's engineer.
Yeah.
They'll handle all the application process and dealing with the senate's office and all that stuff.
Okay, good. That's helpful.
Yes.
So next, we have some new policies from the senior center and an updated job description for the outreach coordinator. Do you want to read them or will we post it to the website?
They're pretty long, I mean, I can start reading them, but they're, it's about.
Well, I've read them, so.
Yeah, I have too. They're about, it's about five or six pages long, I don't know if anybody wants to.
Alright, we'll do one at a time here.
I'll post it to the senior center website.
Yeah.
Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the senior center policies on donations, for accepting donations.
Yep.
And for the policy procedures for food distribution, as well as the new job description for the senior center outreach coordinator.
So moved.
I'll second, any discussion?
I just have a question. Is that something we'll be able to locate and read?
It'll be on the senior center's website.
Yeah, and according to them at the last meeting, I believe they'll also post it, you know, they'll create a post about the donations in a visible place as well, so that everybody has access to that and they're aware.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright. You want to read the letter from the letter?
Sure. Dear Chairman Patritas, I hope this message finds you well. We are writing to you about a proposed change at, I always say it wrong. I say Haston, but somebody corrected me and said Haste, is it Haston?
No, it's Haston.
It is Haston, thank you.
Depends who's sending it, I don't know.
A proposed change at Haston Free Public Library regarding our faxing services. We propose making our faxing services free to all library patrons, a shift from the previous policy of charging $3 for the first five pages and $1 for each additional page. This change would align with the practices of other libraries in our region and take into account the income levels of many of the families and individuals we serve in Northbrook Field. We would suggest that this change go into effect on April 1st. The Library Board of Trustees supports this change and we want to keep the Board of Selectmen informed as part of our ongoing collaboration and communication. If you have any questions or would like further details regarding this proposal, please don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you for your continued support of our library and the services we provide to the community. Best regards, Leah Tulip, Library Director.
So they asking for us to vote on it? Because it seems like they're doing both, advising and requesting.
I think the Board of Trustees would, if they.
It says they support the change, so I guess.
I don't mind voting on it if.
I'll entertain a motion to support their change in pricing.
So moved.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, next we have a memorandum of understanding for the senior center SNAP program. It says this memorandum of understanding will serve as a contractual agreement between Northbrook Field Senior Center, a Centria Care Alliance for cooperation on the Centria Care Alliance SNAP ed nutrition program. And it covers the period 3/24/2025 through 6/30/2025. Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve the MOU with a Centria Care Alliance.
So moved.
I'll second, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, the municipal electrical account aggregation contract. It's this here. And they have some fixed terms for 12 month, 24 month, and 36 month, and it's power management. I'll entertain a motion to go with the 36 month fixed rate.
So moved.
I'll second, discussion?
No, I think that's a good plan and it's just, it's a lower rate to go with the 36 month than to go 24 or 12. So I just want to put that out there for people.
Alright, anything else?
No.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have the letter for ABCC. It's a renewal letter. Says without exception, all annual alcoholic beverage licenses are required to renew their alcoholic beverages licenses by November 30th of each year. All retail license renewal applications must be signed by an authorized corporate officer, individual, or partner and filed with the local licensing authority between November 1st and November 30th. Licenses who are in the process of transferring their licenses are required to file their renewal application until the transfer has occurred and they are no longer the licensee of record. So I'll entertain a motion to approve of the, of signing the renewal letter for ABCC.
So moved.
I'll second, any discussion?
No.
That's typical.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then now, Randy, you have a new hire. Eric Josephson.
Yep.
And you recommend hiring Eric Josephson?
He has all the qualifications that we're ready for.
Did you look that?
I did look at it, alright, yeah, thanks.
Alright, when's the proposed start date?
Probably April 1st.
April 1st?
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion to approve hiring Eric Josephson for the Highway Department.
So moved.
I'll second, any discussion?
No, it looks great.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Alright.
What position is he going to fill?
Randy?
Heavy equipment operator.
Alright, so I don't think there's anything else, is there anything else?
I don't have anything.
Alright, public comment period. Brandon?
I just was asked to kind of inform, this came up very recently, to inform the board that the president of Down House received a grant that enabled us to hire our director of development for a three-month period. That's going to help us create business plan, help us create a plan for capital campaign and fundraising and that kind of stuff. She's coming to town to meet with some board members on Thursday, so we'll have an update for the select board in the near future on plans as far as involvement of the director of development. I just thought I would let you know.
Excellent, alright.
Good.
Who else? Randy?
I'd just like to say thank you to John Tripp for, he got some chairs donated to us for Hox, for the break room.
Oh, good.
Excellent, thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
You're welcome. Karen?
Now that the executive session meeting, the minutes were approved, does that get released publicly or?
They will be released soon, but I'm going to review them and make sure that everything's all set. Because the chair has to review them and release them.
How long does that usually take to do?
It won't take long for those. You're welcome.
In regards to the municipal aggregation, will that, will somebody from the town just kind of apply all the accounts or?
I did.
Okay, so she just kind of, she just, she just see it on one bill?
So, no, you'll still be billed like you normally are. You're not going to see any differences in your bill except a decrease in price.
Okay.
But nothing changes. We were with power management before and they go out and find a third-party supplier for us, so we're just going to be doing that again. So nothing will change, you'll just be saving some money on your electric bill.
Actually, what, was it to the 14.4% per kilowatt, was that the?
It's going to be 0.12435.
It was 14. It was 14. This is even better.
Yeah, it's gone down.
That's, that's great. Awesome.
Who else?
I just have a question. You had on G of the new business, appoint CM RPC alternate. Is there a reason why it was given?
I was informed we don't need to. Alright.
One other thing, if you have time, tonight they're having the, what do you call it again? Sweat? I forget the name of it. The STEAM.
Oh, yeah.
Up at the school.
Sweat STEAM.
STEAM program. It's from 6 to 8 up at the high school. And it's, a lot of the students are doing that kind of work. And it's, a lot of the students are doing that kind of work or showing off what they have done.
Okay, and explain for us all what STEAM is?
STEAM is, well, the sciences, it's STEM with the art stuck in there.
Oh, nice.
So.
All right. Wonderful.
I just have a quick question for Randy. The heavy equipment operator, is he have the licensing for the boom mower and the catch basin?
Here goes.
Fantastic. Okay, good.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to, Jared.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?